The time is now seven o'clock and I would like to call the Boyd City Council Meeting in order at this time. First order business is a roll call.
Roll call shows all councilors present.
Second item is Pledge of Allegiance. May we all stand, please?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Third item is Special Orders of the Day and Announcements. We do have Item 3A. Is a recognition of Brett Abear and Cheryl Simpkins of the Water Resource Division for receiving the Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company Significant Program Award. Mr. Charmida, please.
City Attorney Casper and City Manager Arf. This program, we actually won last fall and due to some scheduling conflicts to get people here, it's taken us a while and the two supervisors have actually submitted the program. Neither one made it again tonight, but Harry is here and, oh, Harry is the Director of Wastewater, so I'm going to present the plaque to him. It says Significant Program Award. Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company acknowledges that the city of Beloit has demonstrated excellence, creativity, and functionality in the development of an original risk management and loss control activity, and by sharing this idea, your community has been chosen as a 2011 Significant Program Award winner for submitting the hazardous materials remote identification rover. And I'm going to let Harry explain the program to you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Yeah, good evening. Yeah, very briefly, I know you have a, I'll keep this off there. I know you have a lot in your agenda tonight. Yeah, briefly, what it is, is similar to what you see on bomb squads where they send in a remote unit. We can do that now to hazmat occurrences and similar types of events. Along with the camera, there's also a gas monitor on the unit, so instead of sending a human in with the monitor, now we can send a robot in. So obviously, we remove the human element, remove the danger, so you protect citizens and our employees from going into hazardous areas. So that's basically what it is. And I wish Brett and Cheryl were here to accept this because they put a lot of time effort along, not only Cheryl and Brett, but also the collection staff and other employees at the Water Resource Division. You know, stuff like this is a testament to their ingenuity and forward-thinking and I'm sure they're very proud of their achievements. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item four is Public Hearings. Item 4A, please.
A proposed ordinance to amend the zoning district map to change the zoning district classification from PLI, Public Lands and Institutions District, to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District for the property located at 1872 Porter Avenue. The Plan Commission recommended approval six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Christiansen.
AZR Financial, Inc. has applied for this rezoning to C2. The building located at 1872 Porter is the former convent. It hasn't been used as a convent for, well, before me, before I've moved here. It was most recently, when I came, it was Rock County OIC and had other offices in there. But they are in the process of purchasing this through line contract. We did discover that they were operating an unauthorized circuit board assembly use in this building, which isn't allowed in the current ordinance. They did go through the process to try to change to go to a use variance through the Board of Appeals and they were denied. So we talked about, we talked, staff talked to them with other options of what to do with the property. The comprehensive plan does show this as suitable for neighborhood commercial uses, so they did submit the request to rezone to C2 Neighborhood Commercial. At this point, what they've indicated is that they intend to operate a business that would repair computers and office equipment on the property and that is allowed by right in the C2 zoning district. There is a little issue with spot zoning, but then we've got one spot zoned, C2. But what we would do is if this was approved by council, we would initiate, we would work with Hendrix to rezone the Head Start facility to C2 as well, which is an allowable use for the Head Start facility. And so basically, because it's consistent with the plan, Plan Commission did hold a public hearing and did recommend approval of this rezoning to C2. And no neighbors did come out for or against. As it went through this process, the neighbors did, never did call and, you know, and express any concern with doing the neighborhood commercial uses. And the applicants are here this evening if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Item 4A is open for a public hearing. I would like to open a public hearing at this time for Item 4A. If there's anyone wishing to speak on Item 4A this evening, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak on Item 4A this evening? Anyone wishing to speak on Item 4A this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at this time. And if I can entertain, well, we go to council discussion first. Council DeForest.
Thank you. Ms. Christiansen, I'm concerned about spot zoning here as well. You referenced that. Could you share, what was the reason that the use variance was denied?
In order to get a use variance, you must show a hardship and they couldn't show that they had and that there's no reasonable use of the property. And they couldn't show that there was no reasonable use of the property because it could be zoned to C2 and you could do something else with the building. So a test for use variance is actually more of a, you have to give a reason why it's justified to bend the rules, where this is an actual rezoning process. And since it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, this area was planned for neighborhood commercial uses. And we do not believe that there will be a negative impact on the neighborhood from traffic or anything like that, you know, that there will be a negative impact on the neighborhood by allowing C2 uses.
Okay, you said this area was planned for neighborhood commercial uses, but I can't think of anything else in that area.
Well, the comprehensive plan shows neighborhood commercial for this area. So this block...
It does fit with the comprehensive.
Yeah, so the comprehensive plan showed neighborhood commercial uses on this, the Head Start and, I mean, because that takes up the whole block, the Head Start and the Convent building.
Okay. So what I heard you say and what I saw in the minutes from, from Plan Commission was in order to keep it consistent that we would be looking at possible rezoning in the Head Start building, I'm guessing Head Start might not be too keen on having commercial enterprises there in that building. I mean, have we checked with them to see how they would feel about that rezoning as a current tenant there?
It's not going to change, I mean, it's, it's up to the owner, Hendrix Development, to decide what goes in there either way. I mean, we, we would be initiating that on their behalf and so they would have the opportunity to weigh in on that. We were planning to contact Hendrix to discuss this with them as the property owner.
Okay. Let's say Hendrix decides they don't want to proceed with rezoning it, then in effect we are spot zoning?
Yes, we are spot zoning.
Did you say that the, the, the business that submitted this application is here that we can ask questions of?
Yes, they are, right here.
Thank you.
You can state your name and address for the record, please.
Guy Limperd, 616 South Main Street, Janesville.
Good evening. Thank you. I appreciate your interest in having a business open in the city of Beloit. I'm just concerned about its impact on the neighborhood and concerned about spot zoning. Have you looked at other locations for your businesses? Is there a reason why you selected this particular location?
Well, sure, there were several reasons for picking this location. One, the building would work, it's a reasonable size, and it was cheap. I mean, being just perfectly blunt about it, there isn't that, we don't have any walk-in traffic per se. I mean, you get an occasional person here and there, but it's not like a Best Buy or something like that that's got a parking lot full, even though we do have a lot across the street which is a parking lot. So that came with it at that point. So, I mean, there is plenty of parking at that point, but we don't have walk-in traffic, you know, of any significant amount. I mean, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but it's...
Did you look at other places to locate your business?
Sure, absolutely. A lot of it came down to just dollars and cents economics of what you could afford. I mean, you go up in the Janesville area and you'll find a building for half a million dollars. Come down to Beloit, you can find them for less. I mean, it's just what you can afford.
Well, I'm glad we want you here in Beloit, for sure. I don't want to discourage you that. I'm just concerned about this particular location. So would...
Why, why, I don't understand what the significance of the spot zoning with, why it's a problem.
I'm trying to kind of explain this politically.
Because from what I understood, it was, is the building sat vacant for two years.
Yes.
It's just been, been there, so at least this is giving it some life. It's being taken care of and, you know, cleaned up. It's going to take a long time to clean it up, but it's not sitting vacant anymore.
All right. Maybe, Tom, could you help me out with the succinct explanation of why I might have concerns with spot zoning? I could try, but you might be a little more eloquent about it than I.
Thank you. I guess I'd be reluctant to hazard an opinion off the cuff here without knowing more of the facts. I have not followed the case as it's progressed through the processes Ms. Christiansen described and without knowing that, I'd be reluctant to hazard an opinion. I mean, I don't know if, if there's a sense of wishing to lay it over and I'd be happy to address it, but without that opportunity, I'd be reluctant.
Okay, I guess I will try to answer your question.
Okay.
We, we have a comprehensive development plan for the city.
Correct.
So that general areas of our city, especially our neighborhoods, are protected from a spot of commercial development in the middle of a neighborhood, let's say, as a way to protect and buffer neighborhoods.
Right.
To keep them safe. And in the past, unfortunately, politicians would do favors for businesses and, and make exceptions for spot zoning. They'd say, okay, well, yeah, we have this general rule that this area is supposed to be this, but we're going to make this exception and have this particular area be an exception because we want your business there and because we wanted to do that favor. And so the zoning, the zoning principles are set up to help protect people in general. So that's, that's my concern is just trying to be true to that in principle.
But I thought she said that it wasn't, that C2 wasn't compliance with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. Let me do this. Council DeForest, let me take a couple of other questions from a couple of other councilors. And then if we see the need for additional information, we can pursue at that time. But I want to caution us as we move forward, I think one of the biggest issues, one of the biggest things that we need to look at here is I think Ms. Christiansen said that no one from the neighborhood came forward to object to this business going in there. So I think when we talk about placing something in a neighborhood, one of the things that I look at is seeing what the residents in that neighborhood say. And if they don't come forward and have objections to it, then to me, it's telling me that they're okay with it. That's just my opinion of it. So I want to make sure that councilors keep that in mind as we move forward. But let me get Counselor Noonam and Counselor Spritzer in here and then Counselor Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much for your interest in investing in Beloit. How many employees do you currently have on that site and how many do you anticipate having over the next three to five years?
No more than four or five.
Okay.
In both cases.
Okay. And do you have, for the use of your business, either for deliveries or, or shipping out use of semis that they'll have to pass through?
No.
Okay.
Anything that we would have coming in would be like a standard UPS box, you know.
Sure. And those already currently travel?
Up and down the streets, exactly.
Frequently. And then also, because of the previous use of that particular parcel, there is very nice landscaping that's been retained. Will you continue to retain that, to keep that soft buffer, since you got a business going into a commercial?
We've attempted to already. I mean, I'm not, I'm not a gardener and I don't have a bunch of green thumb, but we've put, put mums out in the front and bushes and such. We've tried. I mean, a lot of it hasn't taken and it'll have to get replaced next year, but we're trying.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Counselor Spritzer.
Thanks. Also wanted to thank you for wanting to have a business in Beloit. Just two questions.
Sure.
Did you look at the zoning of the site before you started the circuit board assembly?
Yeah, because when we talked to the realtor and, and Walter Knight from OIC, they, everybody knew what we did. I mean, it wasn't like it was a deep dark secret. We kept and we just said we want to buy the building. Everybody knew what we did at that stage of the game. And now we've gone and had to sit and relocate that portion of it someplace else, you know, to, but meantime, we still have a building we have to occupy.
Sure.
So it's something that, yes, it was, it was above board, you know, with the realtors as well as Walter Knight from OIC.
And then you encountered the zoning and, so you have moved the circuit board assembly and...
It had to be out of there, yes. So it's gone.
And then, and then you were able to come up with another part of your business plan to have in this building?
Sure, stuff we've done, we've done also, sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Haynes.
I have a question for Ms. Christiansen. Thank you. Okay. I do know that this, and I'm aware that this was, this whole block was intended in the comprehensive plan to be C2 as a, just for the, for public knowledge, I mean, is there, why, why is it that we don't move, when we, when we adopted the comprehensive plan, that we didn't move to get this C2 at the time?
I mean, essentially, we did not go in and rezone everything to comply with the plan because they can continue as they are. It's not until you get a new owner and they want to establish a new business that we deal with the zoning step. And so it's at this point that then, you know, we process the rezoning. The rezoning, those land use applications are required to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And if there is, there are some concerns, I mean, this is on your agenda for a public hearing and there's a first and second reading, so you couldn't lay it over and give us an opportunity to touch base with Hendrix Development, touch base with Head Start if you so desire and take action on February 6th.
Actually, what I was intending to just go ahead and lay a foundation here, so we intend, we, our comprehensive plan is consistent with this use. We didn't do it because we don't do it ahead of time. We wait to, wait for things to unfold. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. That's not, that's not a serious problem here. And, and this isn't, you know, while this is a spot zoning, is this, doesn't violate smart, our smart growth regulations because it was consistent with the plan?
Correct.
Okay, so if we, a true spot zoning that would be inconsistent with the law would be as if we went into an area and we were against both the comprehensive plan and the current zoning?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that clarifies things for me.
Now, I'll just, let me ask this question here, Julie. Is this a time-sensitive issue?
Um...
I mean, would it, would it hurt if we were to lay over?
Well, at this point, there's a notice of violation out there because they've, they had land uses in there. I don't know if you're running a business right now, but we had basically just not done anything more on it until we worked through this process. So, I mean, it's, two more weeks is not going to, or three more weeks is not going to matter in the scheme of things for us, and I don't know if it does for you.
I mean, basically, the assembly portion's done. We're starting to put the rest of it into motion, so I'm assuming that it's going to go forward.
Okay. Counselor Noonam.
That was going to be my same question, so maybe that'll just see if there's support for that, that if, if there are no specific hardships and there's no great need to suspend the rules, that we just go along and do a first reading as normal and then do the second one at the next meeting if, if there's support for that.
Counselor DeForest.
Counselor Haynes, to follow up with one of the questions I had about being in alignment with the comprehensive growth and development plan, so thank you. But I also wanted to ask, because I'm very familiar with that neighborhood and a lot of those properties in the area are rental properties, and so were notices sent to property owners only or also to the residents themselves?
I believe to property owners only.
Right, so I would definitely like the time to knock on doors in that area and just make sure how people feel about it. So, but I, I think that two weeks is plenty of time for me to do that, so I'm comfortable with not laying it over and just doing a first reading.
Before I get to Counselor Spritzer, let me, let me jump in here and make a comment. First of all, I sit down here and we have a lot of businesses come our way and one of the things that I keep hearing is, we need to get more businesses in here, we need to get businesses in here, we need to get businesses, and now we got a business in here. And I'm, I'm just going to say this. We're asking more tough questions of this one individual with a small business that's coming in here with four to five employees than we do with some of the major corporations that come in here. I get that it's moving into a residential area. However, the, the consensus, the consensus of what we have always done is we have always notified the property owner who has notified the residents who rent from them, who have said, there's a new business or something coming into the neighborhood, how do you feel about it? So now we want to take that opportunity and change everything and say, okay, now I want to go knock on doors. And if we are not willing to go knock on doors for every single new business that comes into the city, into a residential neighborhood, then I caution us about going out knocking on doors for this specific business. I think we're asking a lot of tough questions. The residents in this area do not have a problem with it. I am comfortable with laying this over for another week in order to talk to the Head Start. I do believe we need to talk to them, but I would caution us about going out knocking on doors and seeing how individuals feel because there was, I'm sure it was posted, the property owners could have said, you know, this business is coming in there, I'm sure this gentleman has been over there working. If people are interested and they're moving into my neighborhood, I would have gone and said, hey, what's going on over here? I don't see anybody here tonight for this public hearing. Here's what I'm going to do. I need a motion to lay this over for a week or to our next meeting. And then we can get our questions answered, but I would caution us, please, about going out knocking on doors. Is there a motion to lay this over?
Motion by Vander Bogart.
Second by Lukey. All those in favor laying this over. Before we lay it over, if you have any additional questions, please get them to Julie or the city manager and let's move on from there. Okay, we'll have this final, you have a, let me put it this way. It's been motion and second to lay this over to our next meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, we'll lay this over to our next meeting. Thank you.
So, one question for you then, so where does that leave me at this point for a month?
If you could get with Julie, Ms. Christiansen, she could, she'll, she'll lay it all out for you if that's okay.
We'll do.
Okay, thank you. Item 4B, please.
Public hearing regarding an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Beloit and the Ho-Chunk Nation related to a Beloit gaming facility.
City Manager Arf, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This evening, we have, as council president indicated, the public hearing related to the Beloit gaming facility, which we'll call Part Two, a new application to again pursue that facility for Beloit. And also, an opportunity to ask questions or to make comments regarding the intergovernmental agreement. We have a draft of that that has been negotiated between city representatives and representatives of the nation. We are not going to make full presentations tonight as we did last week at the workshop where we had a program that went on for close to an hour, I guess. We do have representatives here from the nation tonight. I'm going to introduce them in a moment. One of the representatives is going to make just a few comments to kind of overview the project, again, give you an idea of the size and scale of the project, the size of the construction budget, the number of jobs, and a little bit about what would be located on the trust site if the application is approved. I'm going to make a few comments after that, very briefly about the IGA, and then we're going to open it up for questions and comments so that the public can respond to all of that. With that having been said, it is indeed a pleasure this evening to introduce to you and again, thank them for taking the time to come down this evening to present to us and to be here to hear all of your comments regarding the possibility of moving forward with basically a second application for the Beloit gaming facility project. It's a pleasure this evening to welcome John Greendeer, who is the president of the Ho-Chunk Nation, Dan Brown, who's a former vice president of the Ho-Chunk Nation, and Dan's going to be presenting in a minute, and Michelle Randberg, who's a public relations specialist with the nation. So once again, thank you all very, very much for your interest in the city of Beloit and for taking time to drive down here this evening. With that, by way of introduction, then I am going to officially introduce Dan Brown and Dan is going to make just a few overview comments about the project to kind of set the stage for what it is that's being, that's under review at this time. Dan?
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Arf. Say good evening to Mr. President, city attorney, and the rest of the city, city council members. As, as Mr. Arf indicated, I will be brief, much unlike the other night. Yeah, the, the idea, the basic concept is on the land that Mr. Arf just references, obviously, to place a 145,000 square foot gaming facility on that location. It would house approximately 50 table games, 50 table games of poker, carnival games, blackjack, and those types of games. Would also house in the neighborhood of 2,000 to 2,200 slot machines. The idea is to employ anywhere from 1,000 up to 2,000 people. We estimate that the, the annual, annual salaries that we'll be paying at that time will be in a neighborhood of $70 million. We're also talking about a 35,000 square foot convention center and a 300-room hotel. And I mentioned, in a neighborhood of 2,000 jobs. And originally, when we have the construction, that will probably be 500 jobs for the construction piece, and we look to invest anywhere from the 150 to 200 million dollars on this project. And that in a nutshell is what we intend to do.
And again, we presented quite a bit of detail on the terms and conditions of the intergovernmental agreement at the workshop last week. It's been posted on the city's website since then and was also attached to the agenda this evening. Basically, that is the document that creates the relationship between the nation that will run the gaming facility on trust land that will be taken into trust by the Bureau of Indian Affairs and held in trust on behalf of the nation. They will use it for the gaming facility with the accoutrements that they just described to you in terms of a hotel, conference center, there'll be restaurants and stuff also associated with the project. The tribes have sovereign immunity as, as an independent nation, and so in order for them to be housed in the community, there needs to be a setup, outline, if you will, of the terms and conditions of that relationship with the host communities. In this case, and under the BIA regulations, it's basically two host communities, Beloit, the city of Beloit, and Rock County, the municipal, and the county government. The IGA includes a number of terms and conditions of that relationship, discusses how we would deal with the land use issues, building permits, city ordinances, and how they would be enforced on the property. It also talks about payment, impact payments to the city that would be equal to or possibly even greater than the property taxes that would be paid if this project were being developed on normal fee property like any other business. And also can include some information on businesses, other businesses that might be run on the trust land. It stipulates all of the things that the nation must do in terms of building the project, complying with city codes, being responsible for the onsite infrastructure, and it identifies things that the city will do in terms of providing offsite infrastructure, the means and methods for paying for that. There's a provision in there for preliminary lump sum payment to the city that will cover much of the upfront cost for infrastructure and also provisions in there for guaranteed minimum payments that will cover debt service costs for the balance of that offsite infrastructure. With that, Mr. President, I think that kind of overviews what the IGA is all about. Obviously, there are a lot of legal provisions in there as well, covering everything from indemnification language to terms and conditions to methods of dealing with disputes that are part of any normal contract document. I think at this point, if you'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing, we'll be happy to take citizen questions and comments.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing for Item 4B. Those wishing to speak on Item 4B, you can come forward and state your name and address for the record. I do have some citizens' participation sheets and I'll read those names off. However, when you come forward, I will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. At the two-minute mark, I will give you a one-minute warning and it kind of gets you to wrap up your remarks. So we're asking you to keep it, please, within three minutes. We're sure we have several people that may want to speak. We ask you also not to be repetitive. If someone else has said something you have said, not to come up and repeat the entire statement again. As I mentioned, we have several people that may want to... As I mentioned, we have several people that may want to speak, so we kind of want to keep it moving. But I'm going to actually hold you to three minutes this evening. So with that being said, the first one is Don Hillbig.
Good evening, council manager, city attorney. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words regarding the casino. I feel a little like a man crying in the wilderness because in the face of what appears to be a juggernaut of government and citizens moving and with some momentum, as I understand it, toward sort of an inevitability, I feel like a man crying, you know? But in any case, it's jobs and money and jobs and jobs. Well, I just hope and pray that it's not pie in the sky and it's not a devil's pact. Either one of those are not a good thing for Beloit. I oppose it for several reasons. Let me list what I think are reasons I don't like it and I don't think Beloit should like it. It's a poor man's tax. That's what people come there and that's what it amounts to. It has no value beyond that purpose for the ordinary citizen. It has no civic virtue, and it has, it does have potential for individual and family disaster. I'm reminded, when I, I've been in casinos, and I'm reminded all the time when I go in there of the scene at Pinocchio, where the children are lured away from school and they go into the amusement park and turn into donkeys.
Excuse me, you have one minute left, Mr. Hillbig.
In any case, a third reason is it tends to hold out false promises. Gambling is a false promise, promotes quick shortcut riches-to-riches mentality. It does not promote the ethic of hard work, save your money, and those are the answers in life. Does not promote those kinds of things. Number four, there are other, I think, legitimate and productive businesses that the tribe can choose. And number five, I don't want the Beloit image and reputation to be gambling. I would much prefer it to be education and learning with a flagship of Beloit College.
Mr. Hillbig.
There's a brighter future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, as people are coming forward, please do not take my holding you to the three minutes as being rude, but we have several people that want to speak. So that's why I want to be fair to everyone and give everybody the opportunity to speak.
Was I over?
No, you're okay. I'm just letting individuals know who may come up and think that I...
I have another minute?
No, you're done. I gave you a few extra minutes while we had that little dialogue, so you're all right. Rick Brunton, please.
Rick Brunton, 751 Euclid Avenue. Am I allowed to ask questions of the nation as part of this?
I would direct the questions this way and then...
Well, I'll direct a question to you. I've read over the IGA agreement. I couldn't find it in there. Perhaps I overlooked it, but is there any guarantee of a 300-room hotel in the IGA? Guarantee?
Okay. And I'll defer, Larry, if you feel that you want to jump in and answer these questions at the time, go ahead.
One of the things we're looking at is...
Oh, no, I only have three minutes, so please, yes or no, is it guaranteed?
We won't subtract this from your three minutes.
Right.
There is, the language in the preamble to the IGA does not specifically identify the uses that are planned for the site. That is one of the modifications that we're looking at and adding that to make sure those items are specifically articulated in the IGA. Also, that stuff will be covered in more detail in the development agreement, which will follow.
Okay.
So we are looking at a modification...
As we sit today, I'll take that as a no.
That's a yes.
There's no guarantee.
It's not in the present time, but we are...
Okay. Is there a guarantee of a convention center in the original building and construction that, is there any guarantee that that's coming?
Well, we are contemplating changing the language in the preamble to include it, yes.
So as we sit today, the answer is no. None of that is guaranteed?
It is not guaranteed, and the current language will be in the final draft.
Okay. Now, is there a social impact to gambling? There absolutely is. Am I going to argue against the casino on the aspects of social impact? No. Is there a criminal aspect to gambling? There absolutely is. Am I going to argue against the casino on the aspects of criminal activity in and around the community because of the casino? No. My arguments have always been straight economics. I have here, and I will leave with you for anybody who wants to read this, this is a summary of six economic impact studies for six proposed casinos that were done in 2000. In Hudson, La Crosse, Outagami County, there was also Beloit and Kenosha in there as well. Real economic loss by an expert. Dr. William Thompson is the world's leading authority on casino gambling. Now, you can choose where you're going to weigh your information from. You can listen to a salesman who's selling a product who has a vested interest in the outcome of whether it's a sale or not. Or you can listen to experts. And if you're going to pick experts, pick experts that do not have a dog in the fight. They have no vested interest in whether or not the casino comes to Beloit. We found such an expert in William Thompson, and he stated very clearly, when you combine economic multipliers, meaning what happens to money once it comes into your community before it leaves your community, the area within 50 to 60 miles of Beloit will lose in real economic activity $209 million every year that is in operation. I'll leave the study for you. You had, Mr. Levy, you did have one comment you wanted to?
No, I said you have one minute.
Okay, I have one minute. I actually won't need it. I'll just encourage all of you, take the time, do the comparison studies. There were actually two of these studies that came out in a positive economic advantage with Schulzberg and Outagami. But all the other four were real lost dollars for the community in the area around. Beloit is not an island. We have neighbors, we have county, we have other adjacent counties, we have an adjacent state. How we treat them also has an impact on how we are viewed within that community. So I'll leave this for your viewing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Louis Pody. I live at 1247 Oak Street in Beloit, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Southern Wisconsin Building and Construction Trades Council. I'm a building representative, a business representative for Plumbers Local 75. We offer our support for the building of this facility. The Southern Wisconsin Building Trades Council works with contractors who have a history of being able to build a quality product, including such projects as the St. Mary's Janesville and Edgerton Hospitals. We also work with our contractors to offer apprenticeship training through the joint area apprenticeship committees. Our training is second to none and offers careers that result in family-sustaining jobs with benefits for our members. We can work with the Ho-Chunk to provide jobs to our unemployed and underemployed members who live in Beloit and Rock County. These are jobs for tax-paying citizens who have an interest in this community. The employment outlook for construction workers is worse than any other sector, and with winter setting in, it's getting worse. The prospect of a project like the casino gives the unemployed local workers and their families hope for the future. We encourage the Ho-Chunk Nation and the city to work with us to give the economy in the area a boost and give the unemployed a chance at the dignity of a good-paying, family-sustaining job. We would like to encourage the Ho-Chunk Nation and the city to recognize the project as the economic driver that it is and to start by using our local workers and our contractors. These are the contractors who employ apprentices as part of their workforce and are actively involved with the apprenticeship committees for their respective crafts. These are the contractors that can assure the Ho-Chunk Nation that the project will come in on time, on budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, 1756 Carlisle. Got some suggestions here for you on the casino. First of all, I think that the majority of people in Beloit do support the casino. There was a referendum a while back, but that was more than a decade ago. It did certainly pass, and I think if you were to have another one, it would probably pass again. But one of my suggestions is, you know what? Maybe it's a good idea to have another referendum because the people that do support the casino, they get a chance to come out and voice their opinion. There's a lot of people that have moved to Beloit since then, or maybe they lived here, but they weren't old enough to vote at the time of the first referendum. And there's also people here that did vote and they moved, and now they're not here anymore. And so, you have another referendum, and let's say it passes again, now you have some legitimacy moving forward with this, basically rally some community to support and says, yes, we support it, or no, we don't. So that's my first suggestion. Doesn't even cost that much money, just throw a question on a ballot. Point number two, one of my concerns I did have would be the impact payments. For every dollar that is made in the casino, the city of Beloit only keeps 1.4 cents of that. Now, 1.4 cents doesn't sound like a lot. I don't know how the numbers actually do break down because it very well could be a lot, could be very fair. But one thing that I do know for sure is, when you guys sit down and look at the budget and you figure out how much it's going to cost around this city, you have to take a look and say, you know, are we going to have enough money to pay for this? And if you don't have enough money to pay for it, you have to make some cuts or you have to raise taxes. And assuming you raise taxes, you're going to come to me and say, hey, Mike, you know what? We're going to need you to pay a little bit more. And in doing so...
Yeah, one minute.
You won't care whether I'm unemployed, whether I have a pay cut at work, whether I had a huge pay increase at work. It's not income-dependent on the taxpayers and the taxes they pay. However, the 1.4 cents, it is income-dependent. So my concern is, over time, what happens if the cost of running the city of Beloit increases faster than gambling profits do? You take a look at charts, you'll see that the city budget has been growing much more rapidly than just standard inflation. So at some point down the future, and I don't know when, it could be 10 years, 20 years, 100 years, 150 years, who knows? You could run into a potential budget problem from that. And last point is, I would ask the city council to be strong advocates for the citizens of Beloit. You know, someone walks into the casino and they hit the big jackpot, I'm kind of worried that...
Three minutes.
...that that might happen here, so I'd ask you to put in a plan that would basically say, provide some tax relief with some of those profits. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Judy Robson, 2411 East Ridge Road in Beloit. I'm here to support the initiative for the casinos. Casinos now are a major industry in this country, and negative attitudes have changed in the past decade. And many states, including ours, are using casinos as a tool for economic development for several reasons. The employment issues, increasing employment and jobs, the greater tax revenues, the growth in local retail sales, and also support for our local activities. I'm thinking of BIF, the Beloit International Film Festival, and some of the other activities we have as well. And some, I do have a few concerns, and some of the concerns are related to the jobs within the casinos. Those are semi-skilled jobs, and I'm not exactly sure who teaches people these things. But if skilled people who deal cards, or who run the wheels, or run the tables, or are part of the security system, they need skills. And if those people have those skills and commute into Beloit, we're not solving our unemployment problem. So I'd certainly like to see some kind of job training in this area. I don't know if Black Hawk Tech would do something like that or not, but I put that on the agenda as looking at a way of finding skilled jobs for people in our area. And also, we heard about construction jobs. Those are a lot of good construction jobs, but I want to be sure they are family-supporting jobs, that they're paying prevailing wage, or they are union jobs. Because again, we want to draw from our own problem of unemployment and hire people within our area that certainly deserve and need and desperately need these kind of jobs. I'm glad to hear the hotel is now being negotiated as part of the agreement because otherwise a freestanding casino won't be the draw that we anticipated. Because then it becomes a go-to place. We get people up from Chicago. We heard what a high-tech casino this would be and how sparkly and a go-to place for tourism, which will have a spin-off effect for our retail as well as boosting our investment. And it's like the stock market in some ways, you know, the stock market goes up and down, and it's about confidence. And I think that when you have such a big project coming to a community like ours, it really boosts the confidence, not only within our community, but outside investors who are looking to build or grow or to sustain or to put something new here. And I'm thinking about that hotel, as I mentioned before, that hotel that never seems to get built. Maybe they'll have confidence and put some money in it and fix it and put it up. And maybe eventually we'll get that Metro train up from Chicago because this will really be an interesting boost. Is my time up?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't quite done, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Harry... I don't want to... Worskala.
It's phonetic, you just...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Harry Worskala, 2500 East Ridge Road. I'm just going to reiterate what Mr. Hillbig said. I find myself kind of surprised that I'm agreeing with him. What impact does this have on other communities like ours? What's it going to do for police protection, for keeping up roads and sewer? What's it going to do to all the things that come with the enterprise of this nature and this size? Gambling addiction. Is there some compensation being put in this thing to save these people that are going to be suffering from this? Lost other businesses. We've just, a man just alluded to that. I think you'll be satisfied with his research or the research he's brought forward. What impact has it done to other similar communities like Beloit? Ho-Chunk is way out, you know, it's got Wisconsin Dells already and so on and so forth. What if in 15 or 20 years, the thing goes belly up and then we're going to take this hotel down like they do with the, when they have a mining situation and they always promise to put the land back? And I would suggest doing a new referendum. That's the old hat referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Look at all the sheets that I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on item 4B this evening? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Steve Holland, 1617 Emerson Street, Beloit. Is there a current agreement with the Chipewa tribes that's still in force, or is that not an active issue? Or what is the status of that? Just a question of clarification.
Yes, maybe I'll answer part of it. There is a development agreement with the Chipewa tribes that is still in effect. It was for a project. Unfortunately, it was rejected. It was also for a site that they were unable to purchase, and the site was sold to a third party, the Ho-Chunk Nation. We do not believe that that agreement would be implementable at this point in time. It's too late. There would not be enough time, even if the site had not been sold. And so, once the property was sold, proposed trust site, we did open a dialogue with the Ho-Chunk Nation. We've also had some dialogue with the Chipewa tribes as well, and I believe there's some dialogue between the tribes, so this is an ongoing, evolving process. But at this point in time, it does not appear possible that the Chipewa tribes could pursue the application process, primarily because they've lost control of the site.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item 4B this evening? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Bob Melton, 2130 Forest Avenue. At last Tuesday's meeting, I did not receive a... At last Tuesday's meeting, I did not receive a copy of the agreement that had been Mr. Arford settled. I do not have a computer, I will not have a computer, I don't want a computer. If you've seen the news today, some insurance company, they stole all the information for millions of people, and now they're sending them letters out. So I picked up a copy today. So I haven't had time to really review it. I just wanted to know something. Is the same agreement for Ho-Chunk exactly, exactly, right down to what it's going to cost us as a city and everything, for the infrastructure and everything? The same agreement that we had for the Bad River ban? Exactly. Not one iota, not one sentence difference.
No, not at all. Several terms and conditions of the agreement are different. Been a lot of changes since that agreement was first negotiated in 2001. So there are a number of changes in that agreement that relate to this specific project.
Well, then I would advise you as city council people to put this off, because as I read in the Beloit Daily News, the county board has changed so much since we had the referendum, that they want to inform all the people before they vote on anything, and I would assume that you people would do the same thing. Do your searching.
Correct. There's no action scheduled for tonight.
I know, but according to the paper...
The IGA is still a work in progress.
According to the paper, it was going to be, it seems like you're pushing this thing real quick, and I would like time to review it. I've got a million questions I'd love to ask all these people, and all of you too, but I ain't got three minutes.
Thank you. Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4B this evening? Seeing no one else, I would like to close the public hearing at this time and open up for council discussion, questions? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am pleased to hear City Manager Arf say, I wrote it down exactly, that it changed from contemplating to we are including language in the preamble about a hotel, so I'm encouraged by that. I think we've heard loud and clear from many of our constituents the concern that this be a true comprehensive package destination spot, not a standalone casino, and many of us on the body share those concerns. So I just want to make sure that that point is recognized. And then I guess I will also say that I personally feel very strongly about resolving, in some way, shape, or form, the previous agreement with the Chipewa Nation in a way that feels ethical to me. So I would encourage, I guess I would encourage the Ho-Chunk Nation to really be assertive about doing that. So, thank you.
Any other council have any questions or comments? Counselor Nunez.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank all the citizens that showed up tonight, as well as last week, and others that have chimed in along the discussion that we continue to have and will continue to have. It's so important to participate in the process. It's part of the reason that we have set up tonight as yet another public hearing. So thank you very much for voicing your opinion. It's not always easy to do that, but it's not that painful either, so thank you very much for doing that. Encourage others to. And when we do finally set a date, there will be more time for people to discuss before that, and as well as that evening. So please show up and have your voices heard. It's very much appreciated. I too was very glad to hear that we are now trying to have action steps to get in the 300-room hotel and the convention center into the agreement. I think that's very nice, and we appreciate that. It makes a very big difference for the type of caliber of project that we're going to be looking at for the future. And one thing that's not in there, and I don't know if it will be or not, but for the construction phase, I think we've heard great testimony this evening of how important it is to try to have local contractors involved in the process. And I think in our ongoing dialogue with the Nation, it sounds as if there is interest in that, but would like to hear more of that if it doesn't end up in the agreement. But, thank you.
Counselor Spritzer.
Thank you. Also want to thank everyone who came out with comments, and regardless of what schedule we end up on for when we consider this for action on the IGA, anybody who hasn't had a chance to ask all of their questions or get things answered, certainly hope you feel free to contact us outside of a meeting. Obviously, this is an opportunity when everybody's in the room, but you're not limited to three minutes if you get in touch with either staff or counselors individually to make sure your questions are answered. So I certainly hope that you feel free to call and do that. I also wanted to echo that I think it's essential that the project be not just a casino, but what we've all heard and what we've talked about and seen presentations about, including Hotel Convention Center, and hopefully beyond, and that I would be much more comfortable moving forward if that were written down somewhere. So I certainly hope that we're able to do that, and look forward to seeing the next draft of the IGA to look at.
Counselor Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we've had several people mention that about the, you know, some postulating a little bit about an additional referendum. I personally don't think it would be revealing or effective, and I think it would be expensive. But as I understand it, we've already passed the deadline to get it on any ballot within the foreseeable future, correct?
Correct.
Okay, when would be the, if something was, a referendum was done, it would have to be for the fall, in November?
It could be in August.
Could be in August, okay. And we have an election that's specifically set for that time at this...
Yes, there will be a partisan primary on August 14th.
Okay. Like I said, I don't, I think that it would be unrevealing, I don't think it would change anything, I would think it would be expensive, and I think it would be just an unnecessarily divisive process. But I think at least some people should know what timeframe they would be looking at.
Thank you. Any other council questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing on item 4B and close the council comments and concerns, move on to item 5, citizens' participation. We've now reached a point on the agenda where citizens may come forward and address the council on any item that's not on the agenda. We will not take action on this item, we will refer to the staff. Is there anyone wishing to speak under citizens' participation this evening? Seeing none, we would go to item 6, consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there anyone, like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Lukey, second by Nunez. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Item 7 is licenses. Item 7A, please.
A resolution setting return date and authorizing issuance of summons for an alcohol license sanction hearing for Sembi Inc., DBA BP Gas Station, 2933 Milwaukee Road, Kristen Luer agent.
Assistant Attorney Krieger.
Thank you. Good evening. At its December 2011 meeting, the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee recommended a 90-day suspension of both Class A licenses for the BP Gas Station on Milwaukee Road. The complaint has been prepared and filed with the city clerk. At this time, the law requires that you set a date and time for a hearing. We've tentatively scheduled that for Tuesday, a week from tonight, at 6:30, provided that's a date that is acceptable for the city council. I have contacted Attorney Henderson, he is willing to act as a advisor for the city council for that hearing.
Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Lukey, there's second. Second by Haynes. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Item 8 is ordinances. There are none. Item 9 is appointments. The following, the undersigned Kevin D. Levy, due to the elected president of the Beloit City Council, subject to confirmation by the city, Beloit City Council, do hereby appoint the following citizen members to the vacancies and terms indicated below. Said appointment is being pursuant to nominations made and approved by the Appointment Review Committee at a regular meeting held January 9, 2012. Board of Ethics incumbent Mini Murray to a term ending December 31, 2014. Incumbent Lisa Peterson to a term ending December 31, 2014. Business Improvement District Downtown Beloit Association incumbent Christine Schlichting, property owner for a term expiring December 31, 2014. Incumbent Jason Braun, owner-occupant for a term expiring December 31, 2014. Incumbent Peter Frunk, non-owner-occupant for a term expiring December 31, 2014. Incumbent, incumbent Deanne Omen, owner-occupant for a term expiring December 31, 2014. To the Equal Opportunities and Human Relations Commission, Max E. Boschart, 1015 Burton Apartment 7, replacing Gretchen Roy to a term ending June 30, 2014. To the Park Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission, Christopher K. Brown, to a term ending September 30, 2012. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Nunez, but second by DeForest. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. Item 10 is council activities and upcoming events. Counselor Spritzer, please.
Thank you. I had the privilege of attending the Martin Luther King Jr. Prayer Breakfast on Monday with most of the rest of the council. It was a wonderful event, and look forward to hopefully attending again next year, and thank everyone who worked so hard to put it on. Know there were a number of other good events for MLK Day that I didn't get a chance to go to, but was great to go to that one. Also, on a more personal note, I started a new job this week. I am the new Assistant Director of Alumni and Parent Relations at Beloit College, and look forward to reaching out to Beloit's alumni and future alumni to help them participate more fully in the life of the college.
Counselor Nunez.
Nothing further to add.
Counselor Lukey.
I too enjoyed going to the breakfast at the Clip Center with the other counselors yesterday, and on Saturday at Blackhawk Tech, another very fine Martin Luther King event was held. And this evening before coming over here, I think I saw Counselor Vandy Bogart at the BIF kickoff, which really is exciting, that Beloit has something this wonderful, and going on, I think, five years. So want to encourage everybody in Beloit and all of our neighbors to continue to support BIF. It is another very positive thing for Beloit. That's it.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by congratulating Brett and Cheryl, Harry and his staff at the Water Resources Division. I'm very proud of their efforts to think out of the box. We have staff that are encouraged to think creatively and critically, and appreciate their recognition. I would like to take this opportunity, since President Levy chose to cut off discussion of an earlier agenda item, to make the comment that I wanted to make before now. I don't think it's a safe assumption that landlords typically notify their tenants of a zoning hearing. I don't think that that's a safe assumption to be made. And I certainly feel very strongly that it's my prerogative to go knocking on any door in the city of Beloit, to ask residents what they think about something that might affect them. Certainly, as you know, this is not the first time I've done it, and I'm certain it will not be the last time. And I just want to make sure that I make a point that, to recognize that I ask just as tough questions of all businesses. So I don't know where you've been the last years, but I'm just as, and again, I am encouraged by new business, but I also, I feel it's my responsibility to balance that with our residents and neighbors' concerns. So I just wanted to respectfully make those comments. Thank you for the opportunity to do that.
Counselor Haynes.
I have nothing to follow on that one.
Counselor Vandy Bogart?
I have lots to follow, but I won't say anything, no, nothing, thank you.
I would like to also echo the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Breakfast. It was a wonderful event, and I think what really set it off is the joint effort between the Beloit and Janeville students, that we see them coming together to form a choir and perform at this event, and it was a wonderful event, and I understand that they did the same thing at Blackhawk Tech. So I think we can learn a lot from a lot of youth, and if they can get together and play well together, then I think sometime as adults, when we look at regionalization, that was, that's the attitude we should take, that we want to do what's best for each city, do the best that we can for the communities involved, and do the best that we can for the citizens. And I think that that's what the kids were exhibiting, and I think that's what's important as we move down this road, tough budgets, that we need to make sure that we're thinking outside the box and look at the other communities as well. And that's all that I have. City manager's presentation, there is none. Item 12 is reports from boards and city officers. 12A, please.
A resolution approving the agreement between the city of Beloit and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local Number 643 Transit.
City Manager Arf, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council obviously is aware that this is a new bargaining unit that the city had to create out of Act 10 in order to protect our federal transit funding for the city's bus system. The basic terms and conditions of this first contract were to incorporate all of the subsidative provisions that were in the old 643 contract that were relevant to transit workers. And there are some work rules in there, there are some job protection language items in there, and the city agreed to incorporate all that language into their new contract for the trade-off for those employees paying their WRS contribution. So they will be paying the, right now it's 5.9% contribution to WRS, as are already all of the other non-sworn employees that work for the city of Beloit, management and non-management alike. We also agreed in exchange for that concession, because it does result in an actual reduction and take-home pay, of course, for those employees, that we would authorize a 2.5% salary increase on December 16, 2013, which is right at the end of this contract period. It is a two-year contract, obviously it's synced up with the city, and not only the city's budget cycles, but also the state biennial budget as well. Counselors have any other questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? Counselor Spritzer.
Could you just clarify for everyone, just so that we're clear, that with that raise in 2013, that we're not just passing the buck onward? Could you give us a sense of the savings from the WRS as compared to the cost of that raise in any given year going forward, once they're both in place?
The raise we estimated, let me get back into the staff report here real quick. I think we had all those numbers at the bottom of the staff report. Yeah, here we go. The raise will cost about $700 in this contract cycle. We estimate the annual cost of that would be something like $12,000 or $14,000 that would be paid beginning in 2014 and each year thereafter, because the raise goes into effect at the end of '13. So it'll be fully, it will fully impact the transit budget in 2014 and beyond. The city's savings from the employees paying the WRS contribution is $89,000, roughly $44,500 a year in savings. This will very much help the transit system to be able to meet its ongoing operating responsibilities in subsequent years. This is one of the reasons we really worked hard on getting that particular concession included in this contract cycle.
Any other council have any questions or comments? Counselor Nunez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take this opportunity to thank members of our negotiating team for doing a fine job, and more specifically, I'd like to appreciate all the members of the Ask Me Local 643 for coming together. Every city employee over the last several years has made sacrifice for the whole city to make sure the budgets came in, and we greatly appreciate that, and we appreciate your understanding and your vote on this one. Thank you very much.
Counselor DeForest.
I would also like to acknowledge the sacrifice that is made by this particular local and other city employees who continue to recognize that, you know, we're in a tough economic time, and they're willing to do their part. So thank you to our transit employees as well.
Any other council have any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion for approval? Motion by Nunez, second by Spritzer. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. And before we go to item 13, which is adjourned, I want to do, as we always do, thank the Beloit High School students for coming out and attending the meeting. Fortunately, you guys were the lucky ones, the first group that came through were here till 10 o'clock, so we could definitely stretch this out if you so desire, but we wanted to let you go. So I think it's very encouraging when we look up there and see students coming in and seeing exactly how the city council works, so we greatly appreciate you coming out. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Out. Motion by DeForest, second by Spritzer. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.